Hi, Mary.
Hey Gary, how are you? That was a kind of a nice meeting last night.
Yeah, I mean, well.
I mean. Cozy, you know, but that's what that's kind of what you need to expect.
No, I know, but I'm glad that we're doing these and I'm glad we're getting, you know, some things out. So
Right.
You never know what will happen down the road either.
And you probably learned something you didn't know about pox and wreck.
I did. So that was nice. So I need these just as much as anybody else does.
Right, right, yeah.
Hey Mike, hey Jim.
Hello, guys.
And Naomi.
Hi Naomi.
I'm just.
Cause I'm eating dinner. I'm glad to be here.
Hi.
Hello, everybody.
Barbara.
Hello.
Alrighty, evening everyone. It's 6:45, so I'll call the meeting to order. And roll call, I can see Mike Morelli. In Barbara, Kathleen, Roberta, Betsy, Jessica Buehl, Jessica Cobb, and Mary McGrathen, Naomi Rodriguez, and Gary Paul. Already, has everybody had an opportunity to read the minutes of the last meeting?
I have a question.
Okay.
I didn't get it. Naomi, I got, or hold on, I'm just taking notes. Naomi, I missed somebody.
Mary McGrathen?
Carmen's here?
No.
Oh Carmen's. And Dave is out, right?
Correct.
Okay, hold on, wait, sorry. Roberta, over here. Mike, Amy.
There comes Dave in now.
Dave's coming now. Is Amy here? How's she? Oh, there's. Amy's out, right? Is that?
It appears so, yes.
Jim, Mary, me, Barbara, and Betsy. Okay, I got everyone. It is.
Hello.
Hello, Dave.
Hey Dave.
Already, has everybody had the opportunity to read the it's the last meeting? Any corrections, changes, additions, subtractions?
Mike, I noticed in the open spaces plan that I think it's supposed to be acquisition. There's a typo in there. At the title, it says accusation.
Okay. First one to point out.
I think that's. Sorry about that.
Yet. Yes.
Okay.
Like I say, it's a draft. It's a draft.
Okay. That was the only typo I noticed so far.
Okay, alrighty. Ah. Then I'm going to move that we accept the minutes as written. With the exception of the act, the typo, which I'll cap correct it. All in favor of accepting it?
Alright. Alright. I'm gonna abstain because I wasn't here.
Alrighty. Just mark that down as abstention, that's fine.
Okay. Everyone else approved, right?
Everyone else approved.
Did we have a second? Do we need a second?
I'll second it, Kath.
Okay, thank you.
Correspondences, we saw the agenda was from the somebody please remind me, I don't have it in front of me, from the
Preservation?
Preservation.
Preservation Connecticut News?
Yes. That's the only correspondence we received this month. I don't believe there's any public comments, is there? Alrighty. Informational items, informational comments. I don't have any this month, it's been a slow month, thankfully. Betsy, you have something you want to bring everybody up to date on?
Um, yes, I would like to. Can I make a comment about Maggie's? You had Maggie's projected cost for Maggie Jones for doing the survey on Whitehall Park? And I thought maybe it would be great to team her up with the pollinators? The pollinator group, pollinator pathways group, or or suggest that, you know, maybe together doing something? I don't know, it's just a thought. That was a very interesting walk with, you know, being with them and helping see what they're doing. So that made me think about, you know, looking at Maggie's plan that she might like that connection too.
Jessica?
I'm totally happy to work with anybody that helps make this happen. Um. So I would love to work with her on that. And I kind of, I applied for the alternate spot on this commission because it aligns so perfectly with the goals of the Pollinator Pathway Program. So it's just something that kind of works together. But yeah, I'll definitely reach out to her as well because I think that we have kind of the same mission and the same goals, so.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
It's awesome. And I did, yeah, I got some other information to work with for that too, so it worked out well.
Okay. Well, anyway. So the informational item that Mike was talking about um, is that, you know, it's everybody, I think most people know, I live over on the east side of Ledgerd on Long Pond. And I'm a member of the Lantern Hill Valley Association, the secretary for the organization. We've been over here 40 years. And it came to my attention recently that there's a piece of property which is located at 576 Lantern Hill Road. And that's right across from the old main farmstead, the great big white building, that's farmhouse that sits on the corner of Long Pond and Lantern Hill Road. It has a steel barn on it, that's been there, a metal barn, that's been there since the 90s when it was put up. Um, and so that area is zoned, R60 has a farm use only zoning, no commercial activity. It was purchased in 2013 with, this is hearsay, but the understanding that it was for farm use only. But the person knew that his intent was to do commercial activity. And when that all started, there was quite a bit of activity on that property. Lots of landscaping equipment stored, worked on, that sort of thing. The person also purchased the property that is across the stream and Whitford Brook runs right along there. It abuts that whole property line. And that, that property in North Stonington is the old gravel pit that some people may know Cliff Stimson. He's since passed on, but he had a graveling operation going on back there. And so when this property was purchased, the owner, the new owner was actually driving across Whitford Brook, taking his equipment across that way because it was much easier than driving down to Hyde Mill Penway, taking the dirt penway up and then coming up into the gravel area for whatever he was doing, disposing of, you know, things that he dug up, or, you know, leaf, what, you know, leaf fill. I mean, I'm not sure what he was doing in there, but he was accessing the brook quite a bit. Which is a concern. So there, the Lantern Hill Valley Association, along with two other conservation groups, the McKee Farm Trust and the Long Pond Commons Land Trust did present a position later, letter to Mayor Allen, to Julia Hodge, town planner, and to the town council, that we are very concerned that of the environmental impact. In 2016, he was given a cease and desist order by this, by the courts saying, you recognize it can only use farming. And since then, he's certainly cut back his, his activities there to make them a little more scarce. So he'll be there several times a week, but he's not parking equipment there, that sort of thing. And living here, I see this happening all the time. So that's firsthand, there's other people that have also witnessed it. And so our concern is that if he is given free rein again, and there's a, there's conversation letting him have more access to his garage space for personal equipment, that he will, you know, it's like opening Pandora's box. And it, it'll be hard to put him back in again this time. Things are at a dull roar right now. So environmentally, I foresee that he would start crossing the brook again. A path has been cut across, going across the brook. You can see it's been mowed on both sides. And so we're very concerned about that. And as well, it's frustrating as residents of Ledgerd for 40 years to feel that somebody can knowingly break the law. Yes, he's been fined multiple times, thousands of dollars, taken to court multiple times by the town. And the towns had to invest all this money in managing this owner. And so we, I just wanted to have you all be aware, I did suggest to the mayor that maybe potentially try, trying to purchase that property from him with open space funds would be a win-win for everybody. He'd get some money for the property. The brook would be protected in the face, you know, we were on the brink of this historic event with the restoration of River Herring coming up Whitford Brook into Long Pond. And to have it jeopardized by somebody who doesn't demonstrate any environmental concern is very worrisome. So that's my pitch. I don't know how people feel about it in terms of open space, use of open space funds. I know he paid 60,000 for the property. It's assessed at like 44,000, something like that. It does sit right next, abutting it on the north is a piece of prop, small piece of property that's owned by this Long Pond Commons Land Trust. And so, and adjacent to that is McKee Farm Trust land, and then the Lantern Hill Valley Association dam is just north of that. And so that would be a, a nice protective swath of the, um, yeah, and actually behind the gravel pit is the Hoffman Reserve. So that's North Stonington, that's a different, that's a different story for a different time, but starting here would be a huge, a huge win in terms of protecting some of the water resources. Are there any questions?
I do. Betsy, what's the property and who owns it? What is the, the address?
Yep, the address is 576, yeah, Lantern Hill Road. So it's on the east side and it's owned by Perkins Properties.
Oh, Perk, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, that's the absolute discussion, you know, we had the other day about that. I do know that now the town does, has engaged a zoning enforcement officer. As I believe March first.
They have, I'm sorry, what?
They have engaged a zoning officer, zoning enforcement.
Okay.
Perhaps, you know, this should be taken to his attention before somebody
Oh, oh, yeah.
Use the drive across the brook.
Right, well, I can tell you, he'll deny that. But it's just, he uses that back area. I was over in that area yesterday for like 40 minutes and there's a lot of truck traffic going up into the old gravel pit. In that 45 minutes, there was probably like three or four trucks that I witnessed driving up in there. So, I mean, that's his property and I don't know what he's doing there and that's his right to do that. But my worry is, you know, just ease of access and if people aren't around during the day, people won't see that things happening. So yes, I will, I'll reach out to the zoning officer also.
Like I'm saying, yeah, he may not be doing anything at this particular moment, but just, you know, it may be.
That's right. Yes, yes.
Uh, yeah, you see the message there from Jessica. Perhaps also we could speak to the the appropriate authorities.
Right.
In North Stonington also.
Right, right.
Because.
Yeah.
It's only from one town to the next.
Right, there's a really long history and this probably isn't the venue to get into it, but there was a environmental assessment done on the property in 2016. So granted, it's quite a few years old, but there was concern by the scientists that did that, that there was not just Cliff Stimson's lack of environmental care and contamination of the environment, but also there was ongoing filling of wetlands that was happening, that was fresh. And again, that's from 2016. And so the only way of knowing if things have changed is getting a current one. So they're talking certainly to North Stonington and having some conversation with them would be helpful. Um. Anyway, I just wanted to let people be aware that this was kind of in the background. I spoke with Mayor Allen and he was very opposed to making any changes. He said the law was law and there's no reason for it to bend to this person's will. That was those, that's my, that's my quote, not, not exactly the way the mayor said it. And so I feel comfortable about that, but he's not going to be the final word on it, so. I, are there any other thoughts or questions people have? Thank you for listening to me.
Alrighty. I'll, I'll try to keep my eye on it, try to follow up on this also.
Okay.
Alrighty.
Okay.
We'll see, we'll see where we stand on it. Uh, another informational thing that I just thought of. It is due to the Conservation Commission, it is for Naomi, it's for Gary. That thing I sent you about that piece of property, open spaces, you both received it. Have you been able to locate where I'm speaking of?
Yes, I've got it.
Okay, but you, you know, the area I'm talking about and everything else. And you have any questions about, that's all.
Yes, I'll contact you with any questions I have.
Okay, alrighty then. Out of that, I have no other comments. Anyone else have anything to add? Alrighty, next item would be a fiscal, fiscal, fiscal report. Everybody saw a copy of that? Is anything Roberta wants to add to it?
Uh, no, I've, let me see. I, I don't have anything else and I just thought it was worthwhile for everybody to see the report. Then there wouldn't be any questions. So Christine said she would attach it every month.
Yeah, yeah. She informed me of that. Old business, property walks.
So Mike, we went out to Kettle Hole and, and we, we opened up the, the wall that we talked about a couple, a couple months ago. We went out last week when it was a couple nice days and we opened it up. So now there's a path going all the way through that wall and all the way to the road. And and some people won't have to step over the wall anymore to, to walk on the trail.
Alrighty, good, good. Uh. Whitehall. We walked those. There is a tree up, up on one of the paths that we're gonna have to tend to. It's it's leaning up against another tree and it's hanging over the top of the path, so that's gonna have to be taken care of. I can get a chainsaw or maybe somebody can come up there with me one of these days and give me a hand. More likely to just keep an eye on, make sure nothing gets, you know, nobody gets hurt, that's all. Wouldn't anything, we'll take that. And of course, we did have that invasive species uh, day in the park there. And we did, I think we did quite a bit. At least we began it. You know, cutting back some of the invasive species along the pathways, stuff like that. Any, any other walks? John's? Alright, the next item would be the Whitehall Environmental Assessment. The Margaret Jones's proposal, did everybody have an opportunity to take a look at that?
I never got one, Mike.
Really?
It wasn't attached to my email.
Did everybody else?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let me see if I can find the page number.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mike, Mike sent out a, the first email didn't have it, but the second email did. Correct, Mike?
Right.
He sent the second email and it had the attachment.
I'll go back and look.
Yeah, page 15.
Okay.
So has everybody, well, other than Roberta, has everyone else has, has taken a look at it, read through it? Any comments, conversations? What do you think? Is it what we're looking for?
I have a question.
Yep.
Um, so I have no idea how much these things cost, so I don't know if that price is a good price, a bad price, or, I mean, I don't know what to judge it on. How much is charging?
I have looked at other services. And I don't think it's for the amount of hours of being put into it, everything else like that. I think, I think the price is fair. For the number of hours and everything else like that.
Is it worth getting a second, a second price?
We tried, but we've been trying for a year to find somebody who would do something like this. And this is the first person that we've been but yeah, I have an idea what
Makes it easier.
What you, what you need. And this is what's, you know, we do and everything else like that. Cause I've called different state agencies, different nonprofits. And either they don't get back to me, or they say we don't do that, or it's been, it's been a year that we've been looking for somebody. And this is the first one that seems to have met, you know, the requirements.
So Mike, how much of this overlaps with what Jessica did already with the with the invasive species outlaw that we have?
What this will have us do is you can, you can use the tool of them as tools to now create a maintenance plan for the place.
Okay.
You know what I mean? It'd be in conjunction, the two reports would be in conjunction with each other. You know, I'm sure there is certain ones that would overlap in certain areas because one's invasive and the other one is all of the floor, the floor. So it's still, it, you know, there'd be points, there'd be places where they overlap. Basically, they would be, you know, in conjunction with each other.
Okay. And so would we take this, would we take this money out of the Whitehall fund?
Yes.
Then, okay.
Yes.
Mike, could you tell me what the total proposed amount is?
Uh, again, I don't have it up in front of me, the thing, I don't know how to pull these things up from the agenda.
It's 17.
1700?
1750.
1750, yeah.
Thank you.
Do you think that she would let us know when she was going out? Is this something that members could join in with her when she was doing some of her assessments or?
I feel, I think she would, yes. Yes, I could contact her and tell her, you know, you know, could you give us a heads up? Cause there were some of the members, I think she has mentioned in the past that now, you know, she'd be more than happy to. So I can speak to it if we, so agree.
Maggie is very willing to share her, her knowledge. She, she loves to talk and to people.
Would she give, would she give like status updates, like on, after her visits? Would you be able to, would she like give you like, when she was there in March per se and say, hey, you know, to, to update just how it was going?
I suppose we could ask for that, right?
You could just ask. I mean, you wouldn't get a complete written up report.
Right, but I, I didn't know if like, you know, she would like, hey, I was there and here's a few things you guys could discuss or that I, you know, nothing like real formal.
Yeah, I could, I could find out, see what she plans.
I mean, if someone goes with her on some of the walks that whoever that is, commission member could report back to us. You know, just informally.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And by the way, I think $1,700 is kind of cheap. That's why I asked. I, I mean, it's a bargain to me for all work that she put down there, that she was gonna do. Yeah, I didn't know either, but.
I think that for the amount of time we've spent already looking for somebody with no results, that if we want to do this now, and it's a reasonable amount that we're better off to at least get it done. And as it was, I know, I saw somewhere, she said the sooner she started, the more comprehensive her report could be because she would be able to pick up the spring season. I think that's a valuable piece. Otherwise, it would be
I agree.
Who wouldn't be able to do it and include spring until a, a year later, which would put it off that much longer. So even for that scenario, I think it might be worth it to uh, start. And rather than let it mope along and get nothing done.
I agree. Yeah, I agree too.
Alright, now that we've done this backwards. You can make a motion.
Motion.
Proposal.
That's the discussion.
Here we have discussions.
Already had the discussion. Was there a motion?
No, there was not a motion.
Oh, okay.
I would make a motion that we accept her proposal to do the, the report on the Whitehall for the amount stated. I have a second.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion?
And the money comes from the Whitehall?
It comes from the Whitehall Trust Fund, yes.
Cause you need that in the motion, right?
Yes. Yes. That will accept, yes, it will accept the will accept her proposal for the survey and the, and the funding for it will come from the Whitehall Fund.
You need to mention the amount too in the motion.
One thousand seven hundred and fifty?
Yes.
Got it.
All in favor of this?
Hi.
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 Opposed? Motion carries then. I will get, contact her tomorrow and let her know. So she gets started right away. All righty. And I will fix the spelling. Yeah. Okay, the next one, the open spaces acquisition plan. All right, like I say, I will, uh, we'll get the spelling all completed. It's still a draft. I shared the draft with a couple of people that I know for comments. These people usually write up things like these documents like this. And what they recommended was the first part of it before we got to our goals. It's basically, basically what I did is I put the town's P O C D in there, the plan of conservation development. They said it's not necessary. It's confusing. You have one document already, the P O C D. This is a different document on the new document here, which you do is you'd say we would do these goals in, you know, we, and refer back to the P O C D. You can't pursue things that are not in the P O C D. The P O C D kind of gives you the the town, the town's guidance as to what to do. And so she says, it seems like you're trying to rewrite it or reinvent it or take it. So what they did is they recommended drop that half of it. And just say, you know, we would reference back to P O C D to accomplish our goals. And to try to simplify it and bring it down a bit. What I can do is I can rewrite it, send everybody another copy like that. And then we can, we can talk about it the next meeting, if you think that's you know, that would be like the second, second, second draft. And then we can go from there, if that's all right with everybody. But does anybody see what I'm kind of trying to get at?
Yeah, I, I think that's a good idea.
All right.
Yeah, it makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So that's what I'll do is I'll come up with a different draft. And I'll send it all out to everybody. We can discuss it again at the next meeting.
I think another helpful thing would be to be specific about the the arrows that you have around your corridors that connect various open spaces in town. Uh, be more specific about what pieces of property we're talking about that we would want to acquire in, as, as open spaces.
What I'm what I'd like to see this this plan go towards is the plan of what we're looking at. It's a future. And what you can do is you can use this plan to then begin to identify places. I really do not want to start writing down other people's property document that's going to be, you know, you know, a document out of the Conservation Commission. You know what I mean? If we're using this plan and these goals, then we can start to identify things. And then if perhaps we want to contact these people, that's something we could do in the future. If we see that, let's say that place is gonna be subdivided into, let's say, conservation development, we can, you know, try to see, see that the open spaces set, set aside, conforms into our general plan. There's different things. I'm using as an overall plan without specifying exact pieces right now.
So should you say that?
Uh, I agree, but of course, we've got to keep in mind that when we started out on this effort, we were thinking about uh, subdivision plans that come up in the future, various rationale as to why why there should be open space in one area or not. In other areas, you don't care whether it's open space or not. Uh, it could be developed. But so we, we wanted to be upfront and, and specific about where we want open space to be acquired or conservation investments. And where other, other development could occur. We're, we're not in a position where we want to just say wherever somebody proposes a development, we're against it because we want open space. We want to be saying their rationale for why, why open space should be in a certain place.
I thought the plan would be providing the rationale as to why we would acquire a certain parcel.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? And then now that we have the rationale and we have a plan, then we could go after certain parcels.
Yeah, okay.
Rather than just state, you know, we want, you know, twelve zero zero old farm road or something like that, you know what I mean? I mean, you know, I, I, I think perhaps the owner of double oh seven Town Farm Road would might get a little perturbed when he sees it in print that, you know, we're coming after you. You know what I mean? He may be, but he may not. But you see what I'm trying to say? In other words, this is the rationale, this is the plan. And then from there, we can begin to identify things. You know what I mean?
So would you, would you identify the corridors that you're looking to join together without specifying certain properties?
Correct. Correct. For the time being, what we're trying to do is just put together a plan that gives us the direction. What we're trying to do. You know what I mean? It's, 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 it's the basis of what our rationale, our reasoning and stuff like that.
Is there any plan to meet in person anytime soon? Like maybe have one of these big maps out on the table and just sort of lean over it and point at things.
Can I interject for a second? I wanted, I forgot to mention that I'm having a meeting with Grotten Utilities again on April twenty second. And I understand they've updated the maps with surrounding town information. I don't know exactly what towns, but there was some more information that they have added to the maps. So I'll be bringing that to whatever meeting we go to. So maybe in May, if we could meet together, then we could all look over it.
All righty. This is not not pertinent to the subject we're talking to at hand. But yes, let's get through this and then, yeah, we can, we can talk about that. We can talk about that.
Oh, I just meant in terms of the big map, being able to see the big, the big view. That's all.
I'm just thinking about meeting. Meeting in person. All right.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay. We can always discuss under any other old business. About meetings, because we have had discussions in the past concerning meetings. Well, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about it then. All righty. So is any more ideas and stuff like on, on the open spaces plan? All right, yeah, let me, like I said, I'll bring up and I'll get up another draft, get it all out to everybody. We can continue discussions at the next meeting. All righty. Next item, the open spaces management plan. I've got nothing more new to report on that. I'm still working on that. I'm still like halfway through and I haven't finished anything more. Hopefully I'll have something for the next meeting. Next item is the power equipment. Again, they tell me supply chain issues. They're still waiting for it to come in. I'm kind of hoping it does get in here, because we could actually start using some now. But I will keep in touch with them and try to get that tracked down. The next item, the Tri-Town Trail Greenway. I know Dave, you had said in the past that, you know, if anything comes up, you would bring it up with us. All righty. What I'm gonna recommend is be
I do have something to report.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just today, the Connecticut Greenways Council met and approved the Tri-Town Trail, Trail Greenway. Along with the Grotton proposal for their cross town, the Greenway, yeah, East West Greenway in Grotton. Uh, so there were, I attended the meeting by Zoom. And there were very good comments about this and everyone on the councils, this Connecticut Greenway Council agreed this was a, a good project. And encouraged us. And, and as a follow up, uh, uh, the Parks and Rec Chair in Grotton, Mark Berry, has said he wants to invite the Greenway Council to come down to one of their future meetings. And he's going to host them and right, really kind of kick off these greenways. And, and also to, uh, just to celebrate them. So I'm not sure of the dates of that, but it just, just happened today. And so we can expect that there's going to be some sort of a celebration or kickoff of these greenways now that they've been approved. And thanks to the town council and the mayor who wrote supporting letters to our nomination. Uh, I think this breezed through because of that, at the Connecticut level.
Well, that's, that's great. That's whoa. And I was gonna, you know, I was gonna address that, you know, it's like maybe we just drop it from the agenda till something important comes up. But I guess no, perhaps we'll just leave it on now.
Yeah.
That, that, that's congratulations. That's
Good deal.
So Dave? Am I muted? No. Oh, so what, Connecticut Greenway Council approved what? What did they actually approve?
They approved the designation of the Tri-Town Trail Greenway.
Okay.
Uh, also has decided, not directly with us, but the, they also approved the Grotton Cross Town Greenway. Which connects to our trail.
Thank you. Very good.
Good, it's good.
So if we have a greenway and led it, that's, that goes through the Leicester House property. And then the Tri-Town Trail property. I don't think there are too many places that have two greenways that are so recently approved and um, moving forward with even growing as both towns do. That's really quite unique, I think.
Yeah, and what they like is the interconnectedness of these. They, they like to see greenways in areas where animal life and and plant life can, can spread together. And that's why another argument for greenways to be connected to each other.
Very great.
Well, this is what I was saying on the, the acquisition plan. It is a guide for us. So when things come up, we have a guide and we've already laid it out. And I do believe that one of the corridors that's discussed in there is basically the Tidetrone tra- trail. And now that they've got the greenway, that's another piece. So perhaps with that, plus another piece being designated as a greenway, they qualify for a grant. Then we can go out and take the plan and then look and identify properties that we may be able to acquire. You see what I'm trying to say? How you would use it to plan?
Yeah, exactly right.
Okay, that's, that's kind of was my thought process behind it. Rather than saying we want this, this and that. We, we, it's, it's, it's flexible enough to adjust. If something happens, another side of the town or something happens, we've got it. The reasoning and rationale behind adjusting to whatever situations come up in the future is what I was looking at.
But the arrows, arrows that you have on your maps sort of indicate where generally where we would hope for.
Yeah. Right. And so that kind of all falls, you know, in line with each other. So when it comes to discussing it with interested parties, you have a reasoning, you have a track record, you have an explanation. You know what I mean? You have a much more of a convincing argument. Or salesmanship.
Okay, so if someone was selling a piece of property that we were interested in, we could go to them and say this is our plan of development, our acquisition plan, and this falls within our acquisition plan, we'd be interested in I mean, that's, is that what we would use it for? Something like that?
Yes.
More, more than that, if there was a subdivision proposal
Yeah.
And it fell within our areas, we could go to the Planning and Zoning Commission and say, well, this developer should leave a corridor through there that connects these greenways.
And because we have it in this plan, we can show that we've thought about it and this is why it connect, why it should be connect. Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Cause when you use that in conjunction with the other document, which is the P O C D.
Right.
Tool to find. You know what I mean?
It's a tool. Okay.
It's like, yeah, it's just another tool.
Thank you.
All righty. Any other old business to come before the commission? Meeting again. I don't know how people feel about it, how we, how you want to do it. You can continue to use Zoom. We can all meet in person. They also have this hybrid, which perhaps the town councils can help you on. There's a set of rules and regulations for that. I got a copy and I can send it to everybody. That there is a hybrid where some of people are not present, but a certain amount of members of the commission must be present in the town hall. And the public can also join. So it's similar to a Zoom like them, but it's, it's, it's a hybrid. That's one way we can do things. Or how everybody feels, you could meet in person. Uh, we have met in the town council chambers because it's a wider area and you can meet there too. Uh, last year during the summertime when the weather was good, we were meeting at the Holders Pavilion, because it's outside, it's ventilated, everything else like that. So there's, there is different options that we can do for our meetings, depending upon what everybody's comfort level is. All righty. Yep.
So if you were to have a meeting in person, does that mean from that point forward, you have to do all your meetings in person? Or can you go back to a Zoom meeting for other reasons? If you said, I have this urge to want to spread this whole map out on the table and look at it in person and point at things and I, I try to zoom that map out when I'm looking at it on my computer and thinking
Yeah, I know, it's, yeah. It's, yeah, it gets blurry. Mary, do you have any advice on this?
Um, with the hybrid meetings, um, if you're going to do hybrid, you would probably need to be in town hall. Some, uh, you know, a number of the committee of the say, the, like the administration of the committee, the commission would need to be in town hall. And there others could stay home. The idea is to give people an opportunity if they don't want to come to town hall. I'm talking about the public now, that they could still attend your meeting by Zoom. So you can do hybrid. The, the big thing is you need to put a notice out there at least forty eight hours ahead of time. Especially for the commission members.
Mary, you're correct. So even if you want to do a remote meeting, you could. It just has to be in your agenda. With COVID, you don't know what the changes are going to be. But with hybrid, those who feel comfortable meeting in person can. those who feel comfortable meeting in person can, and those who do not can still attend by Zoom. But you would need, uh,
Probably four of you at, at town hall.
I thought it was three at, I don't, at least for beautification, we were told it was three at town hall and for.
It depends on the number of people on the commission.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Yeah.
Yeah.
Somebody has to be at town hall to run the meeting.
And remember, there are two Ls in town hall. There's one in the town hall annex and one in the, in the side room by Roxanne. So depending on which area you meet, you will have an L. And there are directions there on how to get it started.
Would we like to discuss it now or do you people like to think about it and contact me? You know, in the next few days?
What about meetings? What about meeting outside at the pavilion like we did last year?
Uh, it's still, it might be a little cool, maybe a little dark.
Middle of May?
Middle of May.
Well, beginning May, whatever it was.
I think last year we started in June, meeting at the pavilion.
We went through like October or something was.
Oh, yes. It was cold.
Okay.
We can do that.
So I just wanted to throw out there, I don't know if anybody has gotten one, if you're looking for a big map of the town. Uh, I just got one from Scott Johnson, the Parks and Rec Director. And he was like, I have a bunch. Do you want one? And I was like, do you want multiple? And I was like, one is fine. Um, so you can get one from him. It's like this big, it's in my garage. I've been coloring in the pollinator addresses. So it's been kind of fun.
No, I, I'd love to have one because I have one that, but it's a number of years old. And I've been filling in roughly.
This one is still old. I had to draw in a couple of streets.
Oh, okay. I think it's probably the same one I've got.
Who did you get it from? Who did you get it from? The Parks and Rec?
Yep. So you can ask Scott at Parks and Rec. Um, I don't know, he might be like, I don't have that many. I don't know how many of us there are, but.
Uh-oh.
What happened?
I don't know.
We ran out of time.
You can sign back in.
It looks like Dave.
You can just sign back in.
Should I just?
We do. I don't know either.
Uh.
It says we're viewing David's screen. So maybe.
It looks like Dave shared this with us just before it came up.
What?
Oh, he's the one who opened it? He opened the meeting?
No.
No.
No, open the Zoom. Oh.
This is, I think this is an advertisement for Zoom. This is a commercial break.
You are viewing David and Sarah's screen. Okay.
We're back over here.
So if you go to options, hold on.
Can you X out of it? There's an arrow sitting there that was, yep, there's, your arrow is moving up at the top, maybe? The top right?
Do options.
We're still recording. We're still recording. We're just looking at his.
Alrighty, let me suggest something. We can hear each other.
Yeah. I got your back.
I mean, you guys are all on the side to me. I can see you all on the side. Oh, there you go.
I did that actually. I was a culprit.
Don't touch anything.
Why I don't? I don't know how people feel about this. Like I said, do you want to think about it? And we can't, we can't, once they leave the meeting.
You know, just, just remember, you know, you go to the hybrid, you know, and you have to cancel the meeting because, you know, it's, it's, you know, something, you know, that's virus comes back around. You can do that. You just have to, you know, the appropriate notice and everything. So it's not like you're bound. You know, you can do that for the summer. Then if you feel like it's getting bad or something, then you would move back to remote.
Would you like to go remote the next time? That way, those of you who feel comfortable showing up can show up and feel that you, you know, prefer not to, prefer not to. I mean, we just, but to have the remote, we're gonna need four people. I'll show up for the remote.
You mean the hy- the hybrid? I mean, I would, I'd show up for the hybrid. The, if you need bodies, I would be there in.
What is the date for the next meeting?
Calendar.
May tenth.
It's like May tenth.
I think May tenth.
May tenth.
Tell you.
May tenth.
I'll have to check if my sitter is available. Otherwise I can.
Yeah. Well, you can always like, you know, Jessica can always, you know, zoom in, you know, we just need.
So we need four members to be in town hall?
Yes. In the annex, who used to usually have it.
Well, it looks like we're gonna have to do the remote again because we don't have four people.
Well, I'm an alternate, so I don't know if I count. So I would go.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. She can count. I count you.
Okay. Alright then, that's what we'll do. The next meeting.
Did you, uh, did you get a copy of the, uh, policy and guidelines?
Yes, I did.
Okay, I think it's in, it's in there, whatever is the, it's mainly about making sure everybody knows.
Right.
Um, what the meeting is, you know, what the, and if there's any materials that they need to have ahead of time. All of that, uh, the chairman shall be physically at the meeting location. So, or somebody has to be there if you can't be there.
Right.
We have, we have, uh, seven, is it seven, uh, members on the, uh, conservation?
Seven members to be offered.
Yeah, okay, then, uh, you need three, uh, members physically at the, uh, town hall.
Yep.
If you do hybrid.
I do have a copy of it.
Okay. Yeah.
And I will get everybody a copy, send it to everybody. So you.
You sent, you sent it or somebody sent it. Someone from town hall sent it. Someone, someone sent it.
I might have forwarded it after I received it. It's possible.
Yeah.
Mike, is it worth just doing a survey two weeks before and see how everything's going? COVID wise, et cetera, and just see what people want to do?
We could do that. We, you could do, yes. What I'll do is a couple of weeks beforehand, so we have plenty of time. I can query everybody. Again, we can't hold a meeting and discuss it. But I can query as to what people feel. And then we can make a final, I'll make a decision then. We can make a decision together. I can make a decision then. Alright, as how we feel. Sound alright? Okay. Any new business?
Hey, Mike.
Yeah.
Just throwing it out there. I probably should have said this at the beginning of the meeting, um, just on that. If anybody wants to go for a hike on May seventh, we'll be at the glacier.
What time?
Uh, ten AM, um, with Lisa from the library.
Who's doing it? Hike ledger?
Uh, well, the library is putting it, putting it on and Lisa got ahold of me because I did the kettle hole, um, what was it? Last, no, not last year, the year before, I think. And, um, and I said, you know, well, I'd love to go for a hike. And then I said, I'd see, reach out to any, um, conservation, you know, members to see if they would, they would help lead the hike over at Glacier Park. And they were gonna do the yellow trail. So if anybody would like to join us and help lead that, that would be, uh, that would be wonderful.
Forgive me, I did get that email from you, Gary, and I forgot to include it to discuss it, to pass it on this evening.
That's alright, just as long as it's out there, everybody knows. So it's, it's May, it's May, uh, May seventh. Um, we're meeting at ten AM and like I said, we're gonna do the yellow trail. So if anybody would like to come and, and, um, and help lead that, that would be, uh, that would be awesome. But I will, I will be there.
Ready? Any other new business?
Um, I had someone, sorry, um, I had someone reach out to me, um, because of the Pollinator Pathway Program and it is a young student in town who is looking for an Eagle Scout project and he's looking to establish pollinator gardens in some sort of trail or local area, um. He's still kind of working out his details and stuff like that. So he seems really excited about it and bless you. And he wants to remove a bunch of invasives and plant a bunch of pollinator plants. So it winds up really well with the Pollinator Pathway Program. And it kind of winds up with conservation a lot because he's talking about like at a trail location or something like that. So just something to keep in mind as well. Um, as I continue to work with him for it. So I will reach out to make sure that we're working together because he wants to walk a trail with me or walk. But I'll reach out and see if anybody else wants to join as well. Um, for that. And then I am going to start trying to plan another invasive plant removal event sometime probably in May because April just flew by and, uh, is crazy fast. So something to keep an eye out on. I don't know if anybody has any good dates in mind, but I'm open to any help with that.
Alrighty.
Jessica, are you, oh, I'm sorry.
Um, the legend, well, you know, you follow that. I have something else. So keep going with that topic.
Oh, I was going to ask her if, um, she has any thoughts about Japanese knotweed.
Um, I, so I was just looking through a calendar of like the best time to remove different plants and things like that. And I want to say it's still within that time period of a really good time to remove it. Um, let me make sure. So. Is it in here? No, it's not listed in, oh, here it is. Yeah, this is not the best time to remove that. It's like, yeah, end of May, early June. So that does work for mechanical pulling and stuff like that. So that is something we can remove then. Um, and then like Japanese barberry is also a target for me. I've been noticing it a lot more recently. So, and that one is a, just cut it back and dig it out whenever you can kind of thing.
Right, right. I didn't know, um, there's a large swath of it that's on the Long Pond Commons Land Trust. Um, it's actually contiguous with the other property that I was talking about. Um, so I didn't know if he was looking for something like that. It's, there's a lot of shade there. So it'd have to be something that would be happy to grow in the shade, shady areas. But it's, it's right abutting with her brook. So that was part of why I was asking.
Well, thank you. I will definitely let him know if that is one of the options or different ones like that.
Um, I have a, the Leged Events Magazine, do we want to put something in there? Or do we put something in there usually?
Yeah, I just got that today. And, uh, so I just, I threw it out there to everybody.
Yeah. Didn't, didn't last year, we didn't have anything because we got it too late or something? Or did we? I don't remember.
Yeah, it was for the trails. Didn't we put something in for the trails last year?
The, uh, for the, uh.
Hike legend.
Hike legend, yes, yes. If Jessica, if you wanted to put something I into that, uh, with the legend magazine, the thing I sent to you today and you wanted to submit something to try to get some more people for the removed invasives, it's an idea.
I will, um, see what I can put together for that or at least for, um, you know, pollinator plants and stuff like that. Um, so I'll definitely work on that. I don't know how much space they're going to have. Uh, they, they've given us a lot of space for the Regatta Festival. So I don't know, because it's based on how much space is left and they're like, whatever you want for the Regatta Festival here. And I'm like, okay, cool.
Two hundred and fifty words max plus one picture.
Okay, cool.
And they use the picture if they have room for it, but I would, a hundred words, which is not very much.
Go ahead, sorry.
If they say, oh, no pollinators, that doesn't come because it says commissions and stuff. Put it in under the Conservation Commission.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you could always say we had one removal on a trail already. And now we're planning on doing X, Y, or Z with the Conservation Commission. And I think that would not create a problem to have it under our auspices.
Well, Conservation Commission is doing it in conjunction with.
Right, right.
Yeah.
And I, I don't, do you want some help doing that? Do you want, I mean, I can help if you want.
Anytime. Um, so I don't mean to make it like a conservation project because I know conservation has so much of its own stuff going on, which is awesome. Um, it's just, it's one of the things that when you start a pollinator pathway, it's like reach out to your town's conservation commission, reach out to your towns, this, this, this. And so that's why I'm like, this is the most, it makes sense, like they're the most commonly aligned groups. Um, so it works out really well. And I think that especially it falls in the guidelines of everything that the Conservation Commission is working on. So anyone who wants to help is, I'm happy to have help. Um, I'm looking to establish a board for it at some point because I can't do everything by myself. I'm learning this the hard way. And, um, yeah, it's been fun, but it is something that is very, um, intense. So.
So the Leged Events Magazine, is it, is it about actual events that happen or is it like a little synopsis of what the Conservation Commission has done or wants to do? Or like what, what do you put in that? What, what goes into it?
It can be part of a newsletter also. That's when it was first created, that's what it was, um, not only just events, but like a newsletter for Parks and Rec and Senior Commission.
Okay, so can we put together a li- a little couple paragraphs that says, you know, this year we did X, Y, and Z or, or, and we plan, I, I don't know. Do you, I mean, I think we should let him.
Have, is, if there's something coming up that you would like the town to know about, that would be good to put in, uh, the magazine, especially if, uh, it's going to occur within the three or four months before the next one comes out. It's a good way to announce a program.
Okay.
Yeah, and the only reason I had said that before is because it says, remember that Board Commission Club articles will only be included if room allows after town department articles. And I was like, I don't know what they're prioritizing and what their plans are. So.
Well, I, I'd like to look at it, comes out this upcoming one and then maybe get something together so we can have like a regular, you know, put something in every, every time it comes up about the commission, even if it's only a couple paragraphs saying, you know, whatever.
The one you want to talk to is Kristen Chapman. She's the mayor's executive assistant. And I think she's the one that kind of pulls it all together.
Right. I mean, do you guys think that, that, that would be good to have a little something from the conservation? Okay, alright. Can I kind of look into that and see what I can do? Not for this one, because I think we've run out of time because I think they need it in next week or something, but for the future. Is that alright?
Yeah.
I think the more you keep your face in front of the public, the more support you're going to get.
Yeah, I think so too. And just let people know kind of what we're, yeah, what we're about doing. Yeah, okay.
So Kath, it's April twenty fifth. It's due April twenty fifth at four. So you've got a week in the air.
Okay. A problem. So if I do come, I'm, I'll go to, I'll talk to. If I think of something to write, should I run it, I'll run it by you, Mike? And can you and I figure it out if it's appropriate or do we need a whole commission meeting to?
You, well, you know, you, you can't hold a commission meeting unless you, it's.
Yeah, no, 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 I know.
But I, Mary, i- if me and her discussed it as a project, that, that's perfectly fine, right?
Yeah. It's not a quorum.
Right. Yeah, it's, it's, it's just, it's a separate project that we're working on that two people collaborating with. It's not a, yeah, so we'll be finding, yeah, and contact me.
Okay, I'll do, I'll do, I'll do that if everyone thinks that's a good idea.
Yeah, we'll see if we can get something together. Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
So, so Mike and Kathy, I'm, I'm really good at, at, uh, reducing things into space without losing content. So if you get to the point where you've got four hundred words and you want to take hundred and fifty out, just send it my way. Be happy to do that.
Okay. Two hundred and fifty words isn't very much.
No, it's not. It's not a couple paragraphs. It's probably one. Maybe one and a half.
Alright, alright, Mike, I'll, um, see what I can figure out and get in touch with you.
Alrighty, alrighty.
Thanks.
Anything else?
Barbara.
Yes, so Dave and I were at the Tri-Town Trail Meeting the other night, and we were speaking of invasives, we were talking about the field there, ten eighty-seven Colonel Ledgerd Highway, the beginning of the trailhead there, and that huge field there that we sort of had discussed last fall, thinking that, um, Walter Major was going to mow it down, because I, I don't know if you've been out there, but it's full of invasives. So we thought that mowing it at the end of the season was gonna be a good plan, and we thought that was gonna happen, but now it's spring, and it's apparent that it never happened. And so we were sort of wondering how that happens, I mean, it apparently falls under the jurisdiction of the town council, um, that particular field, uh. So, does anybody, I'm not sure if this falls under this group, but maybe some advice on where we might go to find out how to get that done, or who do we talk to, or?
Can you give me that address again, Barbara?
Ten eighty-seven Colonel Ledgerd Highway, it's right across from Preston Park, the big field there, where the EverSource has been working, putting in the new poles, and it's the trailhead for the Tri-Town Trail right now.
We, we talked about it in the Conservation Commission, noting that it used to be a very good agricultural field.
Yes.
It's a very good, very good soil there, and yet it, right now, it's not being used for agriculture, and is growing up to briars.
It's a mess.
We thought, who is managing this agricultural field, and what would happen to it if noth- nothing is done? And so, maybe, uh, maybe the Conservation Commission or the Agricultural Commission would like to, uh, chime in on this.
And there's another section of the trail, too, that's apparently all these parcels are managed by different people, and the Clark Farm is ma- managed by the mayor, and if you went across that old farm crossing there to the other side of the trail there, that whole area that used to be agricultural is totally overgrown now with invasives also, all like underneath the power lines, but, and that is under the jurisdiction of the mayor's office, so it's a little confusing who to talk to, and maybe, maybe some of those parcels could be managed by someone who's actually interested in the conservation of them, so that they don't become completely overgrown, maybe we can grow some pollinators there. I think pollinator people have been in there looking at it before, but I don't, nothing has happened, so.
It won't be a field for very long.
Oh, it's not now, I mean, it's just, if you look at it right now, it looks pretty flat, because all the plants are dead, but I mean, it's, I mean, if somebody could get in there and mow it within the next couple of weeks, it would probably be okay, but, um, right now, it's just full of prickers and briars and Russian olive, and just, it's a mess, so.
What, what about instead of mowing it, to bring a backhoe in and just take them all out and make it a field again?
Whoa.
And then plant pollinators.
No, that would be a lot of work.
But, well, I, I think. Go ahead, sorry. I was just gonna say, I think if you, from talking, walking with Maggie, mowing these fields a couple times a year.
Here.
Really allow, huh? Couple times a year, really allows, um, native plants, native wildflowers to get a foothold, and keeps the invasive things suppressed, because you're just depleting them of their nutrition by keeping them, you know, they're expending a lot of energy and growth.
And if you backhoe it, all you do is bring up more of the weeds.
Right.
You really don't let native plants continue to grow.
Okay.
So mowing is the choice.
Barbara, let me look into it, and I'll get back to you at your next meeting, okay?
Okay, yeah, it just, it seems like, you know, somebody ought to be able to spearhead taking care of this major asset that belongs to the town that, um, shouldn't just be completely overrun with all those invasives, so.
Right.
I know you guys had contracted, uh, Rocky to, uh, to do the, the mowing of the trail part back last year.
Yes, he did, before their big opening.
Yeah, and I talked to him, and he's, he was happy to do that, he would do that again, I think, if you'd asked him, and, you know, made a.
Yeah, we're talking with him, but that's a slightly different subject, I mean, the mowers that he have, I mean, we need a tractor with a big mower on it to go in there and, and do that kind of mowing.
He's a brush hog.
Yeah, a brush hog.
He's got a lot of equipment, though, he may have what you're looking for as well.
Yeah. But we can't just go in there and mow it, we need to get permission from somebody to, you know, we've got permission to have a trail through there, but I don't think we have permission to go in there and just mow the whole thing down, which would be something that needs to happen, so. But, and maybe Rocky would do it, but first we need to know who to ask.
Yeah.
Naomi can find out how we go about that, and that would be helpful, thank you.
Sounds good. Any other things? No?
Can I, can I make another pitch? Um, it, it, so this probably should have been informational, I'm not sure, but the Leonard Hill Valley Association is trying to get five oh one C three status. Um, we own two of the dams on Long Pond, the third one is privately owned, all three dams need some major upgrades for resiliency, and we don't have the money, because none of us qualify for grants, that sort of thing. Uh, so we have, uh, we're working with our led, our senators, Senator Summers and Senator Austin, to try to get state funding. Um, and, in the meantime, trying to get five oh one C three status, which would then enable us to get some grants. These are really important infrastructure projects that need to happen for the dams, and the dams aren't just for the residents that live around the lake, many of them do need the water level for their shallow wells, they also are a very public resource with the state boat launch. The state boat launch is actually in the town of North Stonington, but two thirds of Long Pond is actually, is in Ledgerd. And then the Ledger line crosses over, and actually a small little strip of Bush Pond is in Ledgerd. So, I, uh, I, I would like to send a video that we had done last year, drone video of the Leonard Hill Valley area, because this isn't just about our dams that we're trying to protect, it's, we're also trying to protect the whole region and the Whifferbrook watershed, which goes up over Sider Hill, wh- the Williamsburg is part of the Whifferbrook watershed, and these are the headwaters for the Mystic River, which flows down to the Long Island Sound. Uh, and can, are people amenable to me sending a video and an informational email? We were asking people to contact legislators supporting some funding option of some sort. The da- the estimate is approximately a million dollars for these upgrades that have to happen. The fishway is being put in by, say, the sound and deep fisheries, um, that's not part of this project that we need to do, so. It's a major conservational effort on our part.
You would think somebody would be interested in partnering with you, I, this year is what, fiftieth anniversary for the Clean Water Act? And here you are, fighting to keep clean water, so somewhere along the way, um, you would think there would be sufficient interest to protect what we already have. Um, I, I'd love to see the video, so.
Thank you. I, it, I think you all saw it, I think I showed it to you, going back before I ever came, became.
Right, when you came to visit the commission, yeah.
Exactly, yeah, um, being able to see it on a large screen is much different. And putting it in context of everything we're, we're trying to do is also helpful. Once we have the fishway in place, our plan is to read you the video, so you can actually see the fishway, we have the design phase, um, a, a first, first flush at what the design of it would look like, and, um, and we're really excited about it. Um, herring are in the river, they're, they are in Whipper Pond, and so you give them the space and the availability, and they will be up here as long as we provide a mechan, you know, the waters for them to flow up, so swim up, they're swimming, the water's flowing downstream, sorry.
Is there more potential for getting, um, grants now that the sound is portion of this national estuary?
Well, so for us individually, there isn't, because grants are only allocated to five oh one.
If you're a five oh one, if you're a five oh one.
Yes, oh, yeah, yeah, that, that would potentially open things up, though, my understanding is grants usually have a matching com- component to them, and so that, you know, we'll see how that, that works. Um, it's a million dollars is a big lift, uh, so, but we're hopeful, we're hopeful that people, you know, there are enough people, there was a early watershed program that was going for Whifferbrook, and I'm stumbled across that, and I'm looking into that. And we are, um, encouraged by our state legislators, they're very concerned, and this, as you mentioned, is the year of the fiftieth anniversary of the Clean Water Act, and so, im- improving the whole, um, surrounding area will be very beneficial for us, for our region.
But what's the name of the group that's looking to get the five oh one three C?
Oh, it's the Lantern Hill Valley Association. We've, uh, been an organization, a state-recognized organization since nineteen seventy-six, though not a, we are non-stock, but we ha- have never applied for five oh one C three status, and so that's what we're going to be doing this year.
Thank you.
The other two organizations that are working with us would be the McKee Farm Trust, which owns the historic property, that's actually the old cottage is in North Stonington, and it, it, um, was part of the property that what our second dam on Bush Pond belongs to. So it was the, a hot, is called Hyde Mill Factory, I think it was, so that goes back to the early eighteen hundreds. The cottage is from that era, and the cottage and dam, and then the Long Pond Commons Trust. Long Pond Commons Land Trust, sorry, Land Trust, I missed that, it's also part of that.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm assuming it's okay if I just send everybody a blanket email, and you can let me know if you don't want to get any more, as I'm making our pitch repeatedly to the senators, and I understand from Senator Austin that people have responded, and let her know that this matters, and the more that people respond, obviously, that gives her more leverage in trying to convince other legislators that this is an important project. Along with it is trying to repair the Lantern Hill, um, road bridge, that's the, with the town line with Stonington. For people on this side, it's an important connector road between one eighty-four from Mystic to Route Two, I know I'm making a pitch for support here, sorry about that. Uh, um, but I don't want to take advantage of you guys, if you don't want to be included in my emailing, so.
I put my email in the, I put my email in the chat.
Okay, great, thank you, yeah, if I send it to you and you don't want it, just let me know, that's fine, we get tons of email, everybody gets tons of emails, so. Thank you very much.
Can I have a motion for a German?
I'll move. Make that motion.
All in favor?
I need a second, I'll second it.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nope.
Okay.
Good night.
Bye.
Night, all.
Yeah, thank you. Why can't I get out of this?
Yeah. Yes. I'm done. I'm writing, um, a con- contact.